I can see the numbers, you know. If someone is going to give the city $100, or we're going to spend $50, is that going to change your vote when a citizen goes, you know what? I don't think that's a good deal. I mean, is it really?
I think it's not so much that, but just putting out the information that this is even being considered. I mean, we just built the stadium. It is four years old. This is essentially adding another $20 million, literally half of the value to it.
I would understand if this, you know, it's just, we're transparent. No, it's just, it's not going to change my vote, but we'll do whatever you guys want to do.
Okay. Could we meet? Greg's out of town next Monday, so that does not work. What about Friday noon?
I will be at my mother-in-law's funeral on Friday.
Okay, not doing that.
Sorry, Karen.
That's why we're here, that. I mean, guys, seriously, that's why it's tonight.
Okay.
We can't get everybody together.
Next Monday works.
Okay.
Do you stay?
Well, if it has to be tonight, as the mayor says, then I think, you know, you walk it on and we vote our conscience. And it's either dead or alive.
Well, that's for walk-ons.
Okay, then we'll walk it on tonight. We've got everybody here. And just to clarify, walking on the full four-story building. Drawings, the drawings for the, because we already have the one-story.
No, we're not going to have the one-story.
But I thought we already had the one-story. We had already funded, right, we funded it, right?
We're having a pivot.
So contract, we're changing the scope to be the four-story. That's it.
I think this is maybe the third work session on this. And the cost of the four-story architectural drawings was presented at the work session. So this isn't the first time that the public or you all, and granted, it's not on the agenda, but we've discussed the 1.2 million and the 4 million at least once before in the public work session.
Right.
But you did approve the one-story currently.
And now we have accurate, more accurate information on the total cost.
We just have an updated number. They're not that much different, frankly, but.
Okay, we're going to need to adjourn the work session. So we are adjourned, going to mute the dais.
I'm not doing that, I have nothing to do with that.
No, but if we thought about it, we might have.
Absolutely.
Apologies, everyone. We are a little late starting the city council meeting because our work session at 5:00 PM went a little long, but it is now 6:10 PM, Monday, October 28th. And I'd like to call the city council meeting to order. We'd like to invite Pastor Matthew Griffin of River Valley Church Ford for the invocation. And please speak directly into the microphone. It's hard to catch your voice if you don't.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you, guys, for opportunities and honor. Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, as we gather this evening to discuss the plans and needs of our great city, we ask for your guidance and wisdom. Grant us clarity to see the needs of our city and the courage to make decisions that foster unity, growth, and justice for all. May the discussions that take place be rooted in selflessness, humility, and understanding. May we be reminded of our shared responsibility to care for our neighbors, no matter the greatness of the need. Help us to listen and act with integrity. God, I ask you bless this city with peace and prosperity. Give our leadership wisdom and knowledge to lead all the citizens of Madison. May your character reign in the hearts of your servants here on this council. In the mighty name of Jesus, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
Just join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Finley.
Here.
Councilmember Robleski.
Here.
Councilmember Spears.
Here.
Councilmember Powell.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
Council President Bartlet.
Here.
Councilmember Denzine.
Yeah.
Councilmember Seifert.
Here.
And everyone who's present, we're going to begin with reorganization of the council. And Lisa, I think you're going to call for nominations. And just a reminder, nominations do not require a second. You can do it wherever you feel comfortable. Okay.
So, good evening. It's time to select your new council president for the year. And I will begin by taking nominations.
Nominate John, John Seifert, please.
Any other saying that or none, by acclamation, we have a new council president, Council President John Seifert.
Congratulations, Sean. You want to swap and then take over the meeting?
Sure.
Renee, can I move faster?
Renee's like, I'm out of here.
Renee, I've never seen you move so fast.
Does that thing got an ejection button?
I think the seat got warm.
Okay, good.
John's in the hot seat now.
Those yours?
Oh, yeah, those are mine.
That's your one?
Thank you.
Sorry, Karen.
President Seifert, it will be your responsibility to name your president pro temp and also to appoint your finance committee chair. And may I interject and say, Council President X Bartlett, thank you so much for a wonderful job.
Likewise, thank you, Renee. All right, so with that, I would open the floor for nominations of council president pro temp.
Nominate Renee Bartlet.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other nominations? All right, not hearing any. We will, out of consensus, have Ms. Renee Bartlet as the council president pro temp. Congratulations, Renee.
Thank you.
All right.
You don't miss any meetings. She's right.
I know, right? All right, and then I think you said appoint finance chair, right? So with that, I will appoint Ms. Connie Spears as Chair of the Finance. And as well as on the finance committee, have Mr. Teddy Powell and Mr. Greg Shaw. All right? Okay, with that, we will call ourselves reorganized. And we'll move on to number six, amendments to the agenda. Do we have any tonight? All right.
First one's Resolution Number 224-357R. That's just to see if anyone authorized the video recording.
Okay, and I think we have that under council president lineup business, but I think under Ms. Bartlet, being that that was, that was the work session for tonight. Do you want to have that under your line item, or would you?
You can take it. I'll take Santa. We'll keep Santa.
You'll keep Santa?
Yeah.
All right, all right, we'll move that under my item then. Okay?
And the second one was Resolution Number 124-357R. That would be authorizing the mentioned professional services agreement with Gilbert and Martin. This architecture, for other people, Bob Allison Martin.
All right, and I think we, we have, what? No? All right, I think we, we have consensus to bring that on. We'll bring it on under planning. Obviously, there will be some discussion on that once we get that topic on.
Is that after engineering?
Well, it's in planning. Wherever planning is.
It's not listed.
Yeah, it's planning, it's not on here, but you would put planning.
After engineering?
After engineering, just add it into there.
Thank you, Lisa.
I saw, Mary Beth, it says planning, so.
It is.
All right, it'd be planning and then item A. All right, any other amendments?
Nope.
All right, we'll call that good, and we'll move to approval of the minutes. And we have first up, the regular meeting from 14 October.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Can you get the vote, please?
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Council President Seifert.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. And now we'll move into presentation and awards. And first up, we have the presentation of the 25-year pin to Lieutenant Greg Dees by Police Chief.
Thank you for this. So anytime one of our employees reaches 20 to 25 years, I feel it's important to recognize him in a forum such as this. Lieutenant Greg Dees has just reached his 25, 25th anniversary with the City of Madison Police Department. 25 years in this particular career field is tough. 20 years is tough. 25, it gets even tougher. Greg has worked just about everywhere in the police department you can work. Patrol, patrol supervisor, shift commander. Currently, he's working in our Office of Professional Standards where he is our manager for Kalia. That's our national accreditation. And we just recently had our first re-accreditation after our initial accreditation several years ago, and ended with a perfect score. We had no standards issues, we had no conditions. And a lot of that has to do with Greg's knowledge. And I feel he's in the perfect office right now because Greg has lots of institutional knowledge of our policies, our pursuits, our way of doing things. And we couldn't be as successful as we are in this police department without that, without Greg's dedication. Greg, congratulations on 25 years.
Just want to say thank you, Chief, City Council Mayor. It has been an honor to serve my entire career here in the City of Madison. But special thanks to my support.
Hey, before you go anywhere, I can tell you this. There's, 2020 was a really tough time in the City of Madison. And in some instances, we had protesters that were not only here at City Hall, but they were at houses, one of which was mine. And I want to tell you, this guy right here was phenomenal with the respect for everybody. And part of the reason I think Madison was able to work with our community and get through a really tough time was Greg Dees. And I can't tell you how much I appreciate what you did for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you, Chief. Thank you, Lieutenant Dees. With that, we're going to enter into public comments. And just as a reminder, you get three minutes per speaker.
Nope.
What?
We haven't approved the minutes.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, we did.
Mm-hmm. And you voted for it?
There you go.
Mar and I both blanked on the same thing, sorry.
Got them.
Sean made me think I screwed up, day one. All right, now we're going to enter into public comments. Just as a reminder, you got three minutes. And please speak your name and, or say your name, and what district you live in. I do not have any comment cards turned in, so with that, is there anyone wanting to address the council?
Margie Daly, Karen's district. So first, I want to mention something about, I see we're approving liability insurance, and we have, let's see, limited liability insurance, $4 million is our, and we increased the liability to 15 million. Now, at the last council, Councilman Seifert made it clear that he felt that we should hire all consultants so that the city doesn't take liability for anything. It was when Gerald Smith was speaking about something, so he said, no, the reason is because the city doesn't want liability, and that's why we have to hire consultants. So I see we have a pretty good insurance policy, so I wonder why that comment was made. Let's go on to this thing with the trash pandas. Okay, so I think it was the last finance meeting I attended, Roger did say they have not given one extra penny over the 1.2 million. When this stadium came up.
It's not true.
All right, just buy time, if you want to yield my time.
But you keep saying it, and it's not right. You can't keep saying something that's a lie.
Roger is the one who told me, he left.
No, okay, I'm sorry, but it's not right, Margie.
Are you going to yield my time? Okay, so this is what Roger said, okay? He's our finance director. Connie was there. He said they haven't brought in one penny over that. There's never been any extra money. We were told 1.5 million was going to be a minimum payment. There has been zero paid down on the first bond. Now we're looking to take another 20 million bond? I just asked, first of all, the man didn't even say his name, or not clearly enough when he got up here, so, Mr. Holland. When we are made to speak our name and our district, at least the person representing, taking all our millions upon millions of tax dollars from the taxpayers of Madison City into this stadium, and we want to build the fourth floor for what, more party boxes? We are not MLB, and the party boxes are not necessary. Neither is a fourth floor. You know, I want to abide by the guidelines, but I mean, how much are the taxpayers being taken advantage? Most of us do not go to that stadium. I know you're a season ticket holder, and you love baseball.
I do.
I didn't say you were a season ticket holder, but you just love baseball, and you don't care how much of the taxpayers' money goes into this sham because they have 50 owners, they have a nonprofit, and then a trust. They all get money before the taxpayers.
Ms. Daly, your time is up. Ms. Daly, your time is up. Ms. Daly, your time is up. No, Ms. Daly, your time is up. Ms. Daly, your time is up. I think you had 20-plus. Your time is up. All right, is there anyone else that would like to address council? Okay, saying none, we will now move into consent, agenda, and finance committee report.
Okay, first of all, on the finance committee report, I would like to respond to Ms. Daly. Yes, they have paid. They have paid a minimum of $1 million every payment, except for the very first one, which was before Mr. Holland was here. It was in the middle of COVID, and we did not have any baseball games at that point. So, yes, ma'am? Sorry? Listen, I don't recall Roger saying what you said he said in any finance committee that I've attended, and I've attended every one of them for the last at least three years. So I will disagree with you there, but anyway, so the.
If I can, please, let's move on to the agenda. When you have your, your time to speak, we'll do that as we.
Finance committee has reviewed the regular and periodic bills. And we also tonight have our payment for our municipal insurance, the municipal insurance company for our city property and liability insurance. We have the payment, or an agreement with Civic Plus for the municipal code ordinance subscription services. We have a settlement for a wrecked vehicle, a 2012 Dodge Charger. We have the, an agreement with Canon Financial for a copier at the, the community center. We have an agreement with Travad Signs for mounting hardware for banners in Town Madison. We have the disposition of personal property, which is determined to be of negligible value from Park &amp; Recs, which is some old soccer goals, playground equipment, et cetera. We've, and that's going on GovDills. We've got a payment to Morrell Engineering for additional work, I mean, for the work on Madison Boulevard. And then we have received a check from Madison Street Festival in the amount of $1,093.93 for the usage of the Mars buses during the Madison Street Festival. And with that, I move to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Spears, second by Shaw. Any discussion? Can you get the vote?
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Council President Seifert.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
I think you called Councilmember Powell twice.
That's what I do.
She thinks I'm more important than Councilmember Shaw.
I mean, it's okay.
All right.
All right, motion, motion approved. All right, with that, we're going to go into presentation reports. And Mayor Finley, you're up.
All right, a couple of quick things. Exciting tomorrow, 9 o'clock, we will cut, break ground for our last elementary school out in Limestone County. Congratulations to them for getting that moving. And congratulations to our community for investing in themselves. Again, a reminder of when council, working with the school board, requested that the community invest 12 more mils of property tax to support our schools. 73% vote said yes. Since that time, we've built Midtown Elementary, Journey Middle School, redone the pre-K, and this will be the fourth school out of that. And from a safety standpoint, added multiple safety features that were part of one mil for that. So congratulations to the community, to both the school board and council. That's an exciting time for us. Also exciting was Thursday night, where we had the chance to celebrate Madison. There were so many, there were so many things and good things that go on. I appreciate our communications team for putting together the videos. I completely messed them up on the back end by switching from a jacket to a jersey, which meant that the microphone that was in my jacket stayed there and did not make it to the jersey. So we have audio for the first part, not the second part. That's on me. And then lastly, and probably most importantly to me, we have a department head retiring. He's in the back of the room. Dustin, when you retired, wasn't your last day? Thursday, not that you're counting or anything, but.
Thank you.
That's 25 years with the city, and Dustin has the ripe old age of 44. Congratulations, you have done a phenomenal job, and we so appreciate what you've done. Thank you, Dustin. And that's all I have.
All right, and that will start with council district. And that will start with council district number one.
I just have a question. Our next meeting is scheduled for Veterans Day. What have you decided? Will we be meeting on that federal holiday, which is Monday, November 11th? Or did you decide to change it to another day?
That's a good question. I assume the city will be closed that day as well, right?
I'm working.
You're working? Yeah, I am, yeah.
It's up to you guys. I'll be here.
Yeah, I mean, consensus-wise, what, or, I mean, what does everybody look like?
Our employees are.
We've moved it to the 12th earlier in the year. It's been changed.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you. I did not remember that. I appreciate it. So it will be November 12th.
Yes.
At 6:00.
Thank you. No new business?
All right, council district number two.
Yes, I also attended the Celebrate Madison event out at Toyota Field. And I cannot speak highly enough about the, all the people and volunteers that were involved. Our chamber ambassadors, our chamber members, there were sponsors, the people that came out and had their business tents so that the kids could go and like trick or treat at the different booths. And I thought that across the board, everything was done very, very well. Everyone there seemed to be really enjoying themselves. And, you know, we have a lot to be thankful for in our city. And I think it's great that we have an event every year that highlights those things that we can be thankful for. That's all I got.
Well said. Thank you. Council district number three.
No new business.
All right, number four.
No new business.
And council district number five.
First, I have resolution number 2024-342-R, authorizing funding for a Santa for the Polar Express Christmas event not to exceed $250.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Do we get trouble if we vote no against Santa? You do?
Big trouble.
Get on the naughty list.
Are we putting Santa in the ornament for kids to come take pictures?
Oh, yeah, we could. They've done that in the past.
Yeah, that's a great idea. I love Santa there.
Yeah, that'd be awesome. Okay. Was that all the discussion you had, Teddy?
I just want to make sure where I stood, that's all.
All right. You're going to have some of my call. Okay, with that, let's get a vote.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Sorry. Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Okay, I also wanted to wish Dustin happy retirement. Dustin, you taught me a lot about code enforcement when I first got elected, and we really wish you the best. And finally, let's see, Connie and John and I attended a luncheon to celebrate 38 national merit semifinalists. That is a record for the school system and a record for the state this year. So congratulations, Madison City Schools. That's all.
Okay. And council district number six.
I'd also like to thank Dustin for his hard work. I appreciate all you've done for our city and for the citizens to thank you. I'd also like to thank Greg Dees for his hard work and all that he has done for this city. On Sunday, I ran into a person. And he was, he'd been really interested in our city. And he came to city just to see what it was like. And he went into grocery stores, and he just wandered around. And he commented how wonderful this city is, how kind people were to him. Even in the grocery store, they were coming up and talking to him. And I just want to say, how many people really have come up to me over the years and just thanked us for being such a great city? And we really are. The people here are amazing. There's a kindness, there's a warmth here that. He came from California. He was pretty shocked to see the way that we are here. And I just wanted to thank everyone for just being such good community members and just, just being good people. I don't know, it's, I was so impressed with this man because he'd been around. He'd been around the world. He travels in a lot of circles. And for him to comment on that, I thought was very impressive. So thank you to the city for that. I have been out of the country, so I wasn't here after the Madison Street Festival. Thank you so much to the city for all that you did for that. It was an amazing festival, as always. Thank you to the police, especially for Public Works, for all that they did. It was an amazing, once again, coming together as a city and doing the family things. And that is just so important. So thank you for all that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. And for myself, for council district number seven, I'll go with the resolution first. I have a resolution number 2024-357-R, which is authorizing video recording and publishing of the 28th October 2024 city council work session. Move to approve.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Shaw, second by Powell. Can I, any discussion? We're going to get the vote.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
And Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thank you. With that, I do want to say as well, Dustin, congratulations on your retirement. I'd be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to make a little fun of you, though, with you waiting until Halloween, you know, don't dress up as a disgruntled, you know, coworker or. But I do appreciate the fact that you are getting ahead of us where you're dressing up like, you know, Papa Smurf, and you got the blue shirt on, and, you know, you just need the hat, right? The red hat on Thursday, so. But hey, all seriousness, congratulations. And I can't believe retiring at 44. Good night. I don't know what your wife's going to do with you, but, you know, bless her heart, so. But no, seriously, congratulations. And then Lieutenant Dees, I know he's left as well. But 25 years on a police department is a feat to make it to that, to, you know, go through everything he's gone through. And now, I mean, I don't know a lot about his past, but, you know, just going through all that and everything, it says a lot, so. And then as Councilmember Bartlett and Spears have mentioned, things we've attended, yeah, they've been phenomenal. And a lot to be blessed about in this city, a lot to be thankful for. Certainly, not everything is great, right? Nothing is just great. But, you know, we are certainly blessed in this community to have what we have, so. All right. That's all I've got. So we'll move into board and committee appointments, which we don't have any. And, but we do have two public hearings tonight. So we'll move into public hearings. Sorry, we'll move into public hearings.
It's going to be Dustin first. It'll be Dustin.
Dustin.
Tim.
No, it's Tim.
Tim. I'm just trying to toss the hot potato here. Somebody take it.
Lena Bateman.
I don't know. The first one's ash rotting and fixing, determining amount of assessment for a weed lane.
Yeah, I think, I don't know if you got the script for that. I think you start with most of that.
Do I have the script?
Did you send him the script?
I don't have the script up here with me.
Oh.
And I did not memorize it. I flaunt drama in high school, so. Am I reading the red or the black?
Do you have to read anything? I mean, just. I think you just read it and let us know what it is.
Oh, okay. All right. So this resolution, this is resolution number 2024-140-R. This resolution deals with the assessment of a weed lane on the following property within the city, Zero Bradley Street. We have been presented with itemized reports showing the cost of removing the weed nuisance from this property. And these reports have been previously sent to the owner of the lot. We'll now have a public hearing on this matter. Is there any owner of or representative for Zero Bradley Street in the audience who wishes to address the reports? Or anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the reports of said cost? All right. Your response, city attorney? No, move on. We will now take up the resolution to assess the lane of this property. Move to approve.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion?
I think it just needs to be noted that it wasn't just weeds. It was weeds and cars and all kinds of different things. And I know Dustin's worked on this for months, I believe.
Yeah, there's lots of, lots of attempts to help and, and work with the homeowner. And all attempts at this point have failed, so. Okay, any further discussion? No? All right, let's go on with the vote, please.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. And with that, from city attorney and clerk, if you'll forward a certified copy of the approved resolution and report to the revenue commissioner, who will add the weed lane to the next regular bill of taxes levied against the property. All right, sorry.
The revenue department has one item for a public hearing this evening. We have resolution number 2024-343-R. This is a request for a restaurant retail liquor license from B&amp;B County Line Road, L&amp;C, doing business as Beignets and Brew for their location on 12120 County Line Road, 3C. This business is applying for a restaurant retail liquor license because it is a new establishment opening in the city of Madison. Everything is in order for this item to be considered.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. We got to open the.
No, sorry, we got a public hearing first. You're right. I just followed you blindly.
All right, let me open the public hearing. Is there anyone here in the, in there that would like to address this?
Margie Daly, Karen's district.
Okay.
I just have one question. It sounds like a coffee shop. Benet's and Brew. Is it a coffee shop that's getting a liquor license, or is this a restaurant? That's all I have.
All right. Anyone else wanting to address this item? All right. I did forget to ask, I guess, is the business owner here? All right, cool. All right, so with that, we'll close the public hearing. We will now entertain a motion. Move to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. Is this just going to be the portion of the building that was grounded coffee? Or is this going to be the whole building, or?
Just grounded.
Okay, so that's pretty small. Okay, all right.
Yeah, it's a grounded coffee location.
And is it going to be a restaurant? A full-service restaurant, or is it?
They do have a full menu, but they do have drinks that will help also. They recommend this license for this establishment.
I think they recommend, what's the word I'm looking for? Specialize in like mimosas and beignets. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Irish coffees.
Any other comments? No? Okay. All right. With that, we've got a motion and a second. Motion was Powell, second Spears, so can we get a vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bart, I'm sorry, Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Take me a minute.
Sorry.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
All right, resolution passes. Thank you.
It took her two years to get, you know, that down, so now it's going to take her year, so.
I understand. I know. It's just like a blip on the radar. I got you. All right, with that, we're going to go into department reports. And engineering, you are up first, sir.
This was my one chance to be Teddy's favorite person.
Yeah.
Hey, you know what? Missed it by that. You're close to my favorite.
First, I have resolution number 2024-339-R. This is authorizing, authorization of amendment number three to the professional services agreement with OHM Advisors on project number 23-011. This is the Balch and Gooch Roundabout for design of additional sidewalk along Balch Road, amount not to exceed $6,500 to be paid from the engineering department budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Shaw?
I'd just like to say thank you for adding sidewalk.
Well, you're welcome.
If I remember right, this connects, as you said in the agenda review, this connects the piece on the north end from Huntsville into Madison.
We're going ahead and designing the whole roundabout. It would be pedestrian-friendly. There's not any sidewalks actually go to that point as of yet. This is a pretty short piece that we can add that gives, you know, some destination.
All right, cool. All right. All right, we got a motion and a second. Can we get the vote, please?
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
You feel redeemed down there now?
Yeah, he feels a little better.
Next, I have resolution number 2024-349-R. This is authorizing change order number one to the contract with Miller &amp; Miller for project number 20008, Browns Ferry Road culvert replacement to include full width roadway stabilization and undercut, $74,933 to be paid from the gas tax fund.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, can we get the vote? We had a motion from Powell, second from Shaw.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
All right, and finally, I have resolution number 2024-350-R, authorizing a professional services agreement with Evaldi Engineering for project number 25003, Powell Road, Burgreen Road intersection, traffic signal, $65,895 to be paid from engineering department budget.
Move to approve. Second.
All right, we got a motion and a toss-up on second. I mean, whichever one you like better.
Eddie had it. Oh, that, she knows it would be maybe.
All right, is there any discussion on this? No, ma'am. Okay, can we get the vote, please?
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Uh, before you go, just curious, on item B, that construction project that's going on right now, um, Browns Ferry Road, how is that project going? I mean, I know we haven't had rain for a while, and they seem like they're going really, really good right now. Are they on schedule, behind, what?
They're, they're very much on schedule right now. We've had great weather, they've made good progress. Uh, they've run into this undercutting issue, but they've been able to get, I think they've got the bottom of the culvert already, uh, poured in place. They're gonna start, I think, this week doing the forms for the sides of the top, and as soon as tomorrow morning, they're gonna start doing the grading work and removing, starting the undercut.
Okay.
The contract goes out till February, but as long as the rain holds out, they're gonna work as fast as they can. Doesn't have to go to February, that's just how long they have, you know, factoring in rain, weather days, that's the point.
I got you.
Ron's been walking it at least two or three times a week and sending me pictures of updates. I'm like, okay, great.
It's a hole, it's a big hole in there.
It is a big hole.
I got you. All right, cool, thank you, sir. All right, with that, we will move into Teddy's favorite person for tonight, planning.
This is my favorite person tonight.
And this is, well, I'll let you, I'll let you introduce it. I was gonna, you're good. Oh, you are good.
Uh, the item is Resolution Number 2024-355-R. This is a resolution that would authorize an amended professional services agreement with Gilbert McClafflin, ex-architects, for the Toyota Field Edition. This would be to prepare construction drawings for a four-story building, and the amount for the drawings is $1,248,000. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Robleski, second from Shaw, so any discussion on the topic?
I'll just say, as I've said several times before, I support doing what minor league baseball is requiring that we do, which is, we've already paid for those plans, a half a million, I think, 600,000, 400, somewhere between 400 and 600,000. And so I support that, definitely don't want the stadium to go the way of Joe Davis, but the stadium's only four years old. I think this would be a great project in 10 years. I just can't see putting the city $20 million more, at least probably, um, in debt when we're already at 85, with the cost of the stadium and the flyovers. So I just wanna share that, that that is my perspective.
And I want to just clarify, this is just preparation of plans, this is not authorizing going out to bid.
So on that same note, we've heard from our Director of Finance that said this would be a good move for Madison. If we don't do this, you're gonna be 12 and a half million dollars, you're gonna be out anyway. It's some extra money, and it pays for itself. To me, it's a no-brainer, um, to move forward with this. I, I know everybody wished it was on, on the agenda as well as I, because of the time restraints and everybody in and out of town, I, I think this needs to be voted on. I know we have heartburn that it wasn't on the agenda, but I still think we need to move forward with this tonight. I, I think it's a good deal for the city lo, long-term. I've spent hours upon hours, um, studying these numbers, talking with Roger, talking with Mark, talking with Baseball Paul. To me, it makes sense to move forward with it.
Well, I'll add a couple of things. One, I take full responsibility for it being walked on, um, and part of that is to get all of you together, and I, and, and to have a discussion like we did, which was a great discussion. And also, so much came out of today with a lot of you guys talking with Mary Beth, or Gerald, or Roger, that in turn gets us to the point where we can even have an understanding of can it work? Um, so I take the responsibility for that, and when, and I'm appreciative of the fact that we bring it forward. Secondly, I agree with Greg. It's hard sometimes to just have Roger go, I'd do it, I would do it. And I think part of what he's telling you is, we don't have to take money from any place else. This in turn will continue with the structure that we have to fund itself. And then lastly, I appreciate the Ball Corp's team. One of the things that Renee had asked for many times is, where's the skin in the game? Where's the support to help us make this happen? And Mark worked with Greg, tried to find a, we'd like to see this, we'd like to see this, and we've continued to, to work together to, to get to that point. And then, fully respect whatever, whatever decision is made, but I will say this. Mara said, why don't we wait 10 years, and then we can see? Where are we gonna be in 10 years if we get it done in two years? Because we're gonna continue to grow. Town Madison is, what percentage done? I mean, Town Madison itself's only about 60% done. There's still 40% in that area. The interchange ramps that you've invested in are, will bring everyone to that stadium. And, you know, most importantly, when you go back to the things that aren't just baseball, they're all non-baseball events, and this adds that much more to do it. So 10 years from now, we're gonna be thrilled that we did it. Right now, again, your Finance Director tells you we can, and I think that's part of working with those numbers. So again, I appreciate everybody's efforts. Lastly, this really does, it's, it's critical that we continue to move it forward at the level that we have to meet the timeframes that Mary Beth's looking to meet.
I have a concern with us walking this item on with such a significant dollar amount, a $1.2 million contract for the architecture plans. I think we should have noticed it to the public so that they'd have a chance to comment, and for transparency's sake. I'm, I'm undecided yet on the wisdom of the plan, because I've pointed out that we don't have a guarantee of the backstop payment in the drafts that we've seen and in our current lease agreement. And so I'm waiting to see that. It could make financial sense, but we have to think about how to handle things when things go wrong, and we don't have the payment. And so rushing an item on without notice, not giving us time to work with our attorneys to make sure we can guarantee that we can make this payment, because we can't do it on our own. We need Ball Corp to help shore up the payments for the next five years. I hope it works, but I don't understand why we have to walk on an item that's this expensive and not give the public a chance to see it.
I completely agree with Renee. I do not support doing this right now and voting right now. I don't think that the constituents have had a chance at all to even consider the new changes, what it's really looking at. There was, I was surprised to hear that we have a work session tonight, but it wasn't then gonna be on the agenda. I thought, okay, we're giving people a chance, and now all of a sudden it's on the agenda. I do not support that, and I agree with Renee. We need to make sure that all things are signed off on, and that we know exactly what the deal is, and that signatures are in place before we step forward and do any more.
So, I will add on, I guess. I do as well, I do share concern how it was brought up. I know you and I talked, and I've talked with many of you guys, uh, since, well, the last Tuesday, I guess, um, when, when this was brought up. I will say, the original intent, having been here since the original ball, putting up the stadium, the whole intent behind that stadium was, worst case, we be cash flow neutral, so that absolutely worst case, we don't lose money, but we could just break even. And we've seen the opportunity that we have actually made money. And I do see the opportunity in front of us by doing this, at least from the standpoint of building, or not building it, but doing the drawings. I mean, I won't remind, that's all that's on consideration, is just the drawings, to go then have a quote from that, that we could then consider and determine whether or not to enter into a contract or not. So, when I look at that and go, okay, we could do just the minimum, I think there's some opportunity there to still do some of the other events, because, and correct me if I'm wrong, but by doing the first, if we just did the first floor, it still addresses some of the concerns, I think, from the NCAA that we had heard about from before of the,
Yes.
about distance, so, I mean, you still have the opportunity there, potentially.
Football, yes.
Yeah, but that compared to what you see from the four-story total is comparatively probably a drop in the bucket.
Yeah, and, and for some of the potential tournaments that we've, we've talked with entities to bring, um, having the four stories is significant.
Yeah, okay. I do as well, though, share the guarantee, or concern about the guarantee for a backstop. I do, and you and I talked earlier today, and I, just full transparency, and I appreciate the discussion, um, just understanding that. I do see your point as well, right? It's not in your best interest, or any really investor's best interest, to not pay, not pay the mortgage from the standpoint of Major League could come in and, you know, all of a sudden, you're, you're out that investment. I see that. I also see your point from the, the legalese, and I'm not a lawyer, so that's more where I'm like, I do, I would prefer that, that the lawyers figure that out. So, looking at all that, and looking at what's here, I mean, I see the opportunity to push some things down the road while those things get fixed. That's my opinion, so, um, but, you know, I, I see it as, as a good investment. I wish we had everything worked out and presented at this point in time. It'd be an amazing opportunity to have all that stuff done and be able to present it as one thing, so. As Forrest Gump said, that's all I have to say about that. So, is there any further discussion?
Could we table this?
That is up to the purview of the council, if some, I mean.
You'd have to make a motion.
You have to make a motion.
I make a motion to table this.
I think the correct motion would be motion to continue, and you have to pick a date for when you would continue.
You can't table on definitely, you have to pick a date.
Okay.
I, I do, I mean, you know, my, I guess, I understand Renee's point, and to a certain extent, I guess, you know, we kinda have to yield to you some on this. I mean, you're, you're an attorney, right? We're, we're, I'm not, so this is your specialty. If I was gonna ask about landscaping, I'd ask Greg, but I've killed a bunch of trees, so he, he can't really help me. So, this is just going forward to, to do the drawings, and then there's, our attorneys still have to work this out, between our attorneys and their attorneys, correct? So is there an opportunity to, to change that language?
So here's my point. When we have the vote on the ultimate lease agreement, uh, if there's a guarantee, this thing makes financial sense. If there's not a guarantee, we've got a lot of risk on our shoulders, and I don't wanna spend $1.2 million on plans if there's, if the foregone conclusion is there will never be a guarantee, because Major League Baseball won't let a franchise owner guarantee that payment.
Or, or that it will even come in at a cost that we can afford.
So, and, and we don't know that piece of it. So not putting it on the agenda when it was published, doing the vote tonight, and walking on a $1.2 million payment when we do not know the answer as to whether we can figure out legally if we can guarantee that payment, because we can't afford it ourselves.
Agree 100%.
No, I, we can't afford it ourselves with the current structure that we have. We can absolutely afford it ourselves.
And then we would need to have a discussion of what we would be sacrificing in roads, and park improvements, and other things, and we should be having a capital plan discussion at a work session.
Agree 100%.
Okay, I do wanna point out that at, during the work session, I did ask Roger about what roads would we not, would we be foregoing for this, if we made this decision to go forward, forward with the four stories? And in his explanation, and this is gonna be a very simplified version of his explanation, this would come from our bond fund, our, and so therefore, it would not affect what our capital projects fund is. This would be a different fund that this would go, come from, and so, and we do have enough in that fund to cover the bond payment. So, that alleviated one of my concerns. I, I don't like the fact that this wasn't on the agenda, I said that during the work session, but, you know, a special call meeting was offered up, and we couldn't come up with a date in the next, before the next council meeting. So, I don't know that there's going to be a perfect answer for this. In fact, I'm 100% sure there's not a perfect answer for this. Either we say, yeah, this was not the way to do this by not noticing it, but we need to go forward because of the deadline, and we figure it out tonight, yes or no? Or we figure out a time we can do a special call meeting? Those are our options here. We either vote tonight, or we do a special call meeting, or it waits till the next council meeting, and we're two more weeks down the road, and we risk not meeting our deadline, so. I hope you're enjoying your new position, John.
Renee's enjoying hers.
No, it's, it's good discussion, right? This is why, this is why, I mean, people like this, right? To have these discussions, so, I mean, you know, we can either vote on it right now, or we can vote on a, a amendment to table, but, I mean, we got, you gotta make a motion to a certain date, or you gotta, and you gotta have a second, and then it's gotta be approved, so.
The resolution is to vote on it now, right? And we have.
Resolution as stands right now is to vote.
And we have a motion and a second.
We have a motion and a second for that, so.
I just believe it's very wrong to go forward without having the people. I remember there were several people that came forward last time, and that were against this whole project. They were not even given a chance to know about it. That does not seem right to the constituents in any way.
They were against it without even knowing the numbers.
No, we, the numbers that were supplied that night.
Even if the numbers were out there, would they have been?
The numbers that have been tossed around, and I questioned earlier about Rush and the interest rate. Has Rush looked at these other numbers? And are they, you know, all these other things? Are they something that he would say, yes, that exactly is what will happen, or wait, we gotta think this out? You know, and I think we skipped that step by not even presenting this to him.
There, there is, most certainly, and I will say, before I, I mean, I'm not gonna say where I'm voting, but before I approve any contract to build anything, I wanna see a business case. Does it make sense, period?
Right.
So.
When I did the numbers last time, they weren't there.
Huh?
When I did the numbers, they weren't there last time.
No, I understand. Um, I do wanna ask, I, and I just cannot remember. So, we already have a contract in place for the one-story, and.
Drawings.
Drawings.
For the drawing, yeah, just for the drawing. And when you and I talked earlier today, you recalled that we had options on that. Which ones, I mean, we talked about that, I thought, either in a work session or a meeting.
There was a previous work session, um, we talked about, um, going forward with, and we've talked about this, um, as you've approved, doing the schematic design, the SD drawings, doing the design development drawings, the DD, and then the CDs. And so, uh, over the course of your various work sessions on this, we've talked about, at what point do you split off, if you will, and pick a lane?
Yeah.
Right? And, um, and up until now, we've had the SD and the DD drawings done for both the one and the four-story, so that we could get the cost estimates done. Going into construction documents is a much more expensive endeavor, you know, the 1.2 million for the four-story. And so, as we've talked in, in previous work sessions, where we did discuss those costs, so the 1.2 million was something that we knew and we discussed before, um, you know, the hope was when we got this latest cost estimate, that, um, you would have enough information at that point in time to be able to make the decision on whether or not you wanted to do the one or four-story, so that we were only doing construction documents on one set of plans. The architect, you know, had given us the proposal for the one-story, which you approved at your last meeting. This is the contract for the four, uh, and then we, you know, can also have both, but that's, you know, additional expense, um, to do. But we have been talking about, you know, these various options for a while now, and the hope was that everything would converge to having enough information for you to be able to make a decision.
Thank you, Mary Beth. Okay. Is there any further discussions? Let's have a vote.
Councilmember Robleski?
Nay.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Council President Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Nay.
Councilmember Denzine?
Nay.
All right, motion passes. As part of that, I do wanna ask, please, in the future, um, just things on the agenda, I know we've talked about it, is let's make sure.
I think you're gonna help immensely by, again, part of where we couldn't get everybody